Educating, Informing, Serving. TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Okay. So what we're going to do is let's go through a little bit of some information, some questions that I have to have when I open the hearing. I just want to talk to all the members. Is there any reason why anybody should disclose any ex parte communication or recuse themselves? Don't hear any? Okay. So we will not need an alternate. We find that. I'd like to let everybody know that our policy basically here is that we'd like to let everybody have a chance to talk. So as most of you know, we have had one meeting already and these meetings are to gather the information that we need to try to make the best decision. So if I could have all the folks in here refrain from, you know, talking back and forth amongst yourselves to the best that you can. And if you're basically going to state something that's been stated in the last meeting, we're more or less kind of just wasting time. So we'd like to stick to new topics and new information. And let's see. Okay, and you've all, I hope, signed in. If everybody's had a chance to sign in, please. That gives you interested status, party status. And let's see. This is just an informational meeting, so we will not be making any decisions on anything tonight. This is part of the major subdivision of the Westminster zoning ordinance and we're just trying to follow through the basic steps of that. So this is the second hearing for application 2170 Rainey Dairy Farm LLC and Peter Shumlin. Property is located at 700 Westminster West Road. The applicant is requesting a major subdivision off of Old Cottin Road. This application will be reviewed under Section 311 Site Plan Review, 447 Rural Residential District Zone, and Article 8 subdivision of land, major subdivision of the adopted 2017 zoning bylaws. That said, I just want to welcome everybody. Thank you for your participation and I think the best thing to do is we'll begin by gathering some more information. I know we had some more correspondence from Attorney Proctor and we had correspondence from...
Sam Angel.
Sam Angel?
Thank you. Yeah, hi, everybody.
Would you like to step over here?
Sure. Yeah, you'll step wherever you want with me.
Okay.
Could I ask a question before we get into new information? Last, at the last meeting, we asked for a list of things that the board was going to check into?
Yep.
And I'm wondering if we just hear the results of what you found out about that?
Okay, sure. We can do that first, if you don't mind, Sam, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
I'm just going to answer these questions real quick.
Yeah, okay, thank you. This is okay?
Yep, that'll be fine. Okay, so the things that I wrote down, David Dietz was referring to, is it Act 178, I believe? Did a little research on Act 178 and what it sounds like to me is Act 178 is still a work in progress because according to what I found, Act 178 talks about the old roads in towns. They were working towards giving a certain timeline on having old roads marked or not marked and they continue to, according to what I found on the internet, and this is all off the internet, each year or every other year, they update the progress. And some of the comments that I heard was that Act 178 seemed to be causing some trouble. It's helping a few things, but it also seemed to be causing some trouble. That's as far as I could go there. Vicky Boas? Okay. You talked about the wintering deer yard. So as far as the map goes that we have for the town of Westminster, it seems as though all the properties that are on Old Cottin Road are all within that deer, the deer yard area, wintering area. So we have something in our ordinance that talks about having possibly a game warden or somebody from the state to come and just go over, you know, the use of the property and that sort of thing. So there is that possibility that we can do that. Let's see. As you can see, I wrote this on a scrap piece of paper, so. Oh, we talked about having a road agreement. I know some of you had talked about putting together a road agreement for maintenance and that sort of thing. That is definitely something that is recommended from everything, you know, that I was looking at is that you have some sort of road agreement amongst yourselves. The property across the road, that is something, did, Russ, the other half of the property that's across Westminster West Road?
Yes.
Were those other people made aware?
I delivered those.
Okay. So those people that were on the other side of the road, the continuation of the property were made aware, so that was taken care of. And total acreage. Okay, the total acreage, I noticed still that we did not have the total acreage, including both sides of the road, on the paperwork, but I believe on our next, our next bit of paperwork we'll make that adjustment.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are we talking about the west side of Old Cottin Road? I mean, of Westminster West Road?
Well, the opposite side of where the barn and the house is. The opposite side of the road.
You're saying that they did reach out to those butters?
I did. Russ did.
I did. Just recently I asked.
That's not what your email says, and I helped him do it.
I'm sorry?
This is more your email says.
Yes, I did it after you asked me about that. Delivered it.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Yep, okay. Yeah, that's what we asked, Russ. That's everything I had on my scrap of paper here.
Oh, there's another one?
Yeah, sure.
You were going to consult with the town attorney to get their viewing on the representation of the issues around the road, did that happen?
On the road?
The town attorney, which proposed the review, information about the other, about this particular...
Yeah, the, yes. Russ.
He reached out to us and said that it is Peter Shumlin's obligation and ability to supply that information and pay for that information and the viewing. Hence why Mr. Angel is here today.
Okay. Is that, is that everything we talked about? Okay. All righty. Sounds good. So now Attorney Angel, I guess we'll let you go ahead and have the floor.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
My name is Sam Angel. I'm an attorney down in Brattleboro. I've been an attorney down there for about 25 years. I may know some of you here. I was with Jesse Kormes, he passed away. It's now called Wyndham Law. I was contacted by Pete after the last hearing to represent the applicant in this matter. And Fletcher and I have spoken a little bit. I did submit an memorandum that I think the town got. So where to start on this? So, I mean, what I briefed for the town, just so you folks know, is I briefed the issue of the status of Old Cottin Road. Because it seemed like from the last time, which I wasn't here, but it seemed like that was a pretty contentious issue. So I've looked at it, Fletcher replied, and I've actually dripped, Joe Divinardo and I actually drove down Old Cottin Road today and also down East Putney Falls Road down there on the backside and took a look at the place. So the actual, I mean, there's a couple of places to start. First of all, the applicant is the one person that owns, right, all along what was formerly Old Cottin Road before it was discontinued. He owns along that entire side there. Under the law, I don't, I don't know if you know exactly where to pick up here and maybe Fletcher, you can tell me if people already know this, but under the law, when a, when a road was discontinued, it reverted, the rights of the road itself disappeared, the right of way disappeared, and the land underneath it reverted to the owner. So that means that there was no right of way at that point, at all, like none. It disappears, legally, a right of way merges with fee simple ownership to property, which means that there was no residual right of way. So to the extent that people have, under that doctrine, there's other, this is just the beginning of a whole long line of legal things, but under, under that doctrine, in order, if somebody, for example, owned both sides of a road, say Old Cottin Road, then when Old Cottin Road was discontinued, if in fact it was discontinued, and there's a question about that, but that's for later, then that owner of that property would have assumed the rights of ownership entirely of the road and the right of way would have disappeared. If they then subdivided the land to some, you know, to some folks on a side of the road, if they didn't specifically include a right of way, then those people don't have the right to use that road. So that, that might be one misconception. They would actually have to specifically be deeded a right of way in their deed to go over that road. There's an exception to that, which is that if somebody owns to the road at the time that it's discontinued, then they do, and they use the road as a right of way, then they continue to have a private right of way over that roadway, right? And if the boundary line of the person's property is unclear where it abuts the road, then it goes to the center line of the road. So for example, the Rainey Farm, if that was all owned, then when that, and assuming that the road was properly discontinued, then Mr. Shumlin would own to the center of that road, right? And if somebody had a right of way over the use of that road, then they could use it, but they wouldn't have any other rights to it, right? The whole, as Fletcher pointed out in his second, Mr., Mr., I'm sorry, your esteemed attorney here, pointed out, the legis, the, the whole issue of ancient roads in Vermont has been a cluster, F, right, for lack of a better term. And there is a guy named Paul Gillies that did a lot of work on this, but it is very, very confusing stuff because you have to go back, as Fletcher and I have submitted documents from the 1800s about how this road was laid out or discontinued or what the, what the laws were, because they, they actually changed right at this particular time when the road was discontinued. In order to obviate all of that, the legislature passed a law that basically says if you used a road that was subsequently discontinued, you can continue to use that road if it's your sole access to any or a portion of your property. So we can talk about the status of Old Cottin Road all we want, but it's a smokescreen. It doesn't matter at the end of the day. That's what the legislature did. They enacted this law to just clean this whole thing up. I went down to Old Cottin Road. I've looked at everything that Fletcher submitted. When you go down to the end of Old Cottin Road as it approaches the Putney Town Line from the north, Fletcher would argue that there's a little road that jogs off about 400 feet north of the Putney Town Line and goes to the east. I went down there and it's very clear, I mean, if you look at the history of roads when they're laid out, is they're laid out with stone walls when they did this in the 1700s. They laid these things out with stone walls. They didn't just cut brush through the woods and said, okay, there's the trail. You go down there, that stone wall is right there. And whether or not, you know, when they, and you look at some of the documents that lay out the road and discontinue the road, they talk about going down to Putney and then taking a left, if you're headed south, which would be east, and then going over the stream bend. Well, and then, and then it talks about, so that, that suggests, even if you believe that for a moment, then what the hell was that other 400 section of road called? There's nothing there. It's Old Cottin Road, no matter how you slice it. The reality is probably both of those were called Old Cottin Road in the 1800s because there's no other way to look at it. I mean, it's a, you know, some of the documents say it goes down to the Putney Town Line, some say it goes across a bridge, you know, that was owned by John Smith of Putney. But at the end of the day, it doesn't matter. It really doesn't matter. All you folks that have that right of way along that roadway, you have it because of what the legislature did and you have it just the way, the same way that Pete has it. If you really want to undo this whole thing and you want to go back to it and check your deeds and see if you got a right of way or not, that's fine, but you're, you're poking a hornet's nest. The bottom line, and you know, the, the folks that volunteered to do this work, you folks on a nightly basis, I mean, obviously, I don't have to tell you how much Pete appreciates it. He's, he's been there before, but everybody appreciates it. It's not easy. It's not an easy job to be in. But at the end of the day, you can't allow some subdivisions to use the road and not allow other subdivisions to use the road. That's discrimination. So I'm not sure, you know, for example, the latest one, and I'm not sure who Mr. Rainey is, who, whose family has farmed this land for so long, but he's got a right of way from his house, from his parcel to Old Cottin Road. Well, how does he get to use it? And Mr. Shumlin doesn't. That doesn't make any sense. It's just, it doesn't make any sense and it's not the law. It's not the way that the statute is interpreted. The statute says you can use, as long as any portion of your land, the sole access to that land is on a discontinued road, then you have a private right of way over it, which is what all you folks, or I don't know who it is I'm talking to, but what some of you folks have already, and that's how you enjoy it. If you, if you say that he's got access to East Putney Brook, well, I went over there. Oh my God, no way. Are you kidding? First of all, you gotta go from the two lots that he's talking about, you'd have to go through the woods, down a cliff, and, and Joe could probably talk more about the cliff, but it's about 400, 500 feet long. It's very steep, across Putney Brook itself, which is actually a fairly heavy stream, and then over to East Putney Brook Road, which is barely a road. There is not a single judge in this state, I can almost guarantee you, that's going to say that road has to be built when these subdivisions are right on Old Cottin Road. It's just not going to happen. That's, when they say sole access, they're talking about sole access considering the topography, considering all of the features of the land, and this isn't just inconvenient. This isn't just having to build a road to an almost non-existent other road that's not used, but it's actually having to cross a stream, go down a really steep embankment, a cliff, basically. And the environmental impact of doing that, when you've got a road right there, is, it's, 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 it's crazy. It's not going to happen. And it's, and I would say it's not what Vermonters want. We don't want roads going through woods and across bridges and building culverts that can get washed out when these hurricanes start coming. It just doesn't make any sense and it's not the law. It's really not. It's, you know, for the board, I, you know, all I can say is I really appreciate your work, but you can't subdivide, let some subdivisions go through on this principle and not let other subdivisions go through. You can't do it because that's, look, that's, that's serious. That's really serious. So I'll take questions and stuff, but at the end of the day, I think Old Cottin Road is ambiguous. I think the evidence will show it went through to Putney. I don't think, and Mr. Proctor, who I respected greatly, he's, he makes the assumption in his reply brief that if, if the road was laid out properly, if the road, as it existed when it was laid out, if that was the road, then it must have been the road when it was discontinued. That may be true most of the time, but in this particular case, Old Cottin Road, right there at the point where Mr. Proctor says it, it branches off to the east and then goes over the, over the stream, the road goes straight there and only for 400 feet. Quite frankly, I don't think anyone knew what the county, what the town line was and I don't even know if they still do. I think the town line may have been 400 feet to the south of that intersection. I think the town line may be right at that intersection. And so I, you know, when they, when the selectmen say, you know, we're going to lay out this road, you know, that goes down to Putney, right, it goes to Putney. It goes through Putney. They didn't have the authority. So if it was dis, I mean, if you want to go down, if it was not, if it was properly laid out and never discontinued and it's still a town road, you know, they're all, this thing spitters out really quickly into a lot of different legal theories. But at the end of the day, I just implore you to come back to your common sense because all law is, is a codification of what hopefully is common sense. And I can tell you, there is no way that this section, 19 VSA 717C, was written to force somebody to build a mile road through the woods, down a cliff, over a brook, to a road that barely exists when there's a road right there that other people are using. And I, I'm happy to answer questions.
I have a question. Mr.?
Angel.
Angel, thank you.
You're welcome.
I understand this is a major subdivision?
Correct.
And you tell us what the plans are for the rest of the acreage at the Red Farm?
Yeah, so this gets back a little bit into the history. You know, this is, I'm an advocate too. I studied Ad Cornell and I love farms. Everybody does, I think. And it, it really adds to what it is to be in Vermont. And this was a really, really old farm and I don't know who Mr. Rainey is, Mr. Phil Rainey.
It still is a really old farm.
Exactly.
We'll talk about it in the past tense.
Thank you. Thank you. And it's a really, really old farm and he, Mr. Shumlin had, he, he wanted to preserve that for as long as he could when everything was going, when it was falling apart. But if you look topographically, because I just went out there because I was concerned about this question about what is going to be the future use of this, there's a wooded, there's a huge beautiful field behind the farm and that is not being touched and there's no plans to touch it or anything at all. The two pieces of land that are being subdivided, which are roughly eight and 13 acres, which is well above the minimum, are in the woods and he can't, he can't, there's parts of that that you can't develop at all. I've asked him and he says, Sam, I have no plans to do anything further. I just want to, I just want to get rid of these. I can't tell you, sitting here, I can't read the dude's mind and I don't know if he's going to change his mind, but I can tell you, sitting here right now, that there are no other plans.
But you cannot ensure that they will not do other things.
Ma'am, how could I? You know, I, even if I did, even if I told you right now, he will not do it, what if in 10 years he did? I mean, I, I just, I can, no, you're right. Correct. Absolutely correct. Yes, sir.
He told my parents when he bought the farm, he wasn't going to develop it at all. So here we are, 15 years later and he's trying to do exactly what he said he wasn't going to do.
Okay.
He's hot where it is. Yeah.
You know, so.
Like, let's start talking about his character and what's going on here, really. Why do you think everyone's turned out here? You're the only one here in his favor. He's not even here himself.
So all I can tell you, sir, is that for the, for the development review board, this is not a personal thing. This is, this is a question of an applicant making an application for a major subdivision pursuant to the zoning bylaws. I don't know the man. I'm not going to attest to his, you know, his bona fides. I'm not going to attest to whether or not he's a good man or an honest man or a shyster. I don't know, but all I can do is I can tell you that looking at this, he's got a subdivision here which more than meets the town plan in terms of being in a rural residential area. He's got acreage that far exceeds the minimum. He's not trying to build five, five acre lots. It's not like he's trying to do that. He's, you know, he's still, it's a residential area. There are clearly houses on every side and what he's proposing, you know, is not, I mean, again, I can't vouch for him, but just looking at it objectively, he could have done a lot of other things. He could have done a lot of other things that would have been, which really would have gotten the gander up on people.
Can I, can I?
I don't think that's what anyone here wants to hear.
Can I interject? Can I interject for a second?
Sure.
So just as Attorney Angel has, has just said, we talked about this, I think, every time we've been here. We have a set of regulations, Westminster zoning ordinance, that we all have a chance to vote on and to work on if we want to. We're simply burdened, basically, I'm going to say, with the task of deciding whether it follows these rules. I understand, I'm getting a feeling that maybe you don't get along with Mr. Shumlin.
Does anybody here in the room?
And, but, but all those, but all that.
By the way, as an attorney, I don't necessarily get along with him either. I'm just a lawyer.
He likes money.
But all, but all that, all that taken into consideration, we still, again, I live on a farm, I have cows in the field right behind my house. My personal feelings on this are not interjected in what is taking place here, basically. I can't, I mean, I'm here to follow a set of rules. I, we've talked about this the whole entire time. And I think some of the road controversy was simply because, and, and these guys can speak for themselves, but we have not had too many subdivisions on a road that is either on an un, what's it called, an unsomething corridor, an unidentified corridor, or a private right of way, or a discontinued road. This is a pretty unique road you guys all live on. And it also on maps lays out, as Fletcher Proctor here had mentioned in his paperwork, look at all the old maps. When I look at all the, you can pick old maps that show that road appearing to continue straight instead of taking the, but you also see the 90-degree turn or T, as I call it. So, but there's nothing written down on any of it that, that says. Okay, okay, go ahead.
Well, to respond, I mean, Mr. Angel's talked about a lot of things. He didn't ever mention the bylaws and I'm glad you got back to them.
Yeah, yeah.
Now Exhibit A that I, that I attached to my memo, which is not a really easy document.
It's an illegible document, as far as I can tell.
If you go down to about three quarters of the way down the page, there's a reference here to, see, the bottom third of the page is actually the layout of Old Cottin Road or they didn't call it old then, so Cottin Road. The upper part's a different road entirely. But you go about to the middle of that bottom third and you'll see the phrase, Cottin Bridge. That's the bridge over East Putney Brook. That's the bridge that is out there in the woods or used to be. It's now no longer serviceable. But yeah, Cottin Road did do exactly that. And there is a road, an extension of Town Farm Road that comes up into that intersection. That wasn't, I, as far as I can tell, that was an old farm road and it made sense to farmers to connect into the road, but it wasn't what the town laid out. Now, Mr. Angel's been a great pains to point out in his memo that if it crosses a town line, it can't be laid out by the selectmen. Fair enough. If it, if, if Cottin Road actually crossed the town line, then it wasn't legally laid out. I mean, the whole point of which is that. The, the point of it though is if, it's either a legal road now or it's not. And if it wasn't laid out legally, then it never was a legal road. If in our understanding it was laid out legally because it was entirely within the town, then it was discontinued legally 60 years later. Either way, it's not a town road now. The bylaws say that in order to develop this property, Mr. Shumlin has to demonstrate either that the develop, the development is along a town road or that he has a deeded right of way. And what anybody else on the road might or might not have isn't relevant to this. This is about Mr. Shumlin's application.
Right.
So getting back to the bylaws, which as I say, I appreciate that that's your focus because that really is the issue here.
It is.
Has he shown you that he can comply with the requirements of the bylaws? The problem with, with Mr. Angel's argument, which is true, if a road is thrown up and your access to your property was over that road, you retain a private right of way for access to your property. You can still get in and out, you can. That doesn't raise itself to the level of what the bylaws require for a development where you would have to be deeding rights of way out to other people. It also is a mere right of passage. It isn't a 50-foot wide right of way, which is what your bylaws say is required, either frontage on a town road or a 50-foot wide deeded easement. And so far. And so far, we haven't seen that. I mean, I, I will argue vigorously that that road does exactly what Mr. Angel says is unlikely. It comes down toward the town line, and four hundred feet north, it takes a left. Heads off and goes over that bridge and connects into the underquarry road. That's exactly what it did.
Is Mr. Jared Ralston here?
Jared?
Jared Ralston?
He's not.
Okay. Jared Ralston, Ralston sent us a document, something that he came up with himself. And I found, I found the exact law on the Vermont statutes online that Mr. Angel referenced. And then, twenty minutes later, I was reading through Mr. Ralston's paperwork here, and he argues the fact that the road went into Putney. I'm feeling now like, I'm sort of sorry that we made it as big a deal as it is, as it's become right at the moment. Because, in all actuality, when you read what Mr. Ralston, what Mr. Angel, and what I've read in the Vermont statutes, I kind of feel like all of you guys have a right-of-way to your property because of exactly what the state did in, is it, was it 1999 or 2000? They made it, so nobody's going to have an issue getting to their property. The state of Vermont does not want landlocked, and I'm speaking for myself personally. I don't know this law written down. I don't believe the state of Vermont wants landlocked land. I don't think they want people's, you know, to not be able to use their land. Thus, this section right here, Title 19, highways, 19 VSA 117, Section C, seems to be the, the important portion of it. And I'm just going to read it to you. It says, "A person whose sole means of access to a parcel of land, or portion thereof owned by that person, is by way of the town hu, is by way of the town highway or unidentified corridor that is subsequently discontinued, shall remain a private right-of-way over the former town highway or unidentified corridor for any necessary access to the parcel of land or portions thereof, and maintenance of this is his or her right-of-way." So, I believe that, unfortunately, we just beat up on Old Cottin Road here and went back and forth, and, and in actuality, and I would, I have, we have two attorneys here. So, if you, are you, if you want to dispute what I read, and if you think that that's not actual...
I won't, I won't dispute it. What I'll say is, Mr. Shumlin has access to his property. It's called Westminster West Road. That doesn't mean he has a right to shoot a road down Old, use Old Cottin as if it were his only access to his property. He meets that statute because he's still got frontage on Westminster West Road. That's not where this development is taking place. He's trying to bootstrap Old Cottin Road into being his corridor for development. That's not what that statute's about.
So...
It's not, his property isn't landlocked. His property is not landlocked by any stretch. It's got a whole lot of frontage on the Westminster West Road.
Right. So, I guess, on the board here, we want to make the proper decision. I guess what I'm wondering is, I think this was brought up earlier. There are twenty-two pieces of land that are accessed or, or, or bound Old Cottin Road. Twenty-two pieces, not including the two that we want to divide off. So, it'd be a total of twenty-four. If the other twenty-two...
Is it you that wants to divide it off, or Mr. Shumlin?
You know, you know, I, I'd like to, I'm going to get all your names, because I want you guys to sit up here and put up with the same comments and the same things.
Chris, can I ask a question?
We're just trying to determine the best course of action here.
Don't quote your own name.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure, go right ahead.
Where is our, our town attorney?
Really?
We have two attorneys here. What is our town attorney's take on this?
The question that we...
Where's his stance?
The question that we asked our town attorney was the one that was brought up over here as to the legality of using the road, and he answered the question. We're not getting paid to be here.
Well, what's the answer?
Paying enough money to have him here?
I think you have somebody representing you, but I'm not sure.
They're representing Mr. Rainey, not us.
So, you said, I'm just, just curious. So, if this is deemed not a road or a right-of-way to that, what happens to the other properties?
Well, first off, that's not relevant to this proceeding. Access to those...
Well, if that gets brought up in another question...
Access to those properties isn't an issue in this proceeding. But the other part of it is, Mr. Angel's incorrect that that, that there is no deeded easement down that road. There are people with deeded easement. Tony Kissel figured this problem out thirty-five years ago and corrected it for his client. There is a deeded easement down that road. It just doesn't belong to Mr. Shumlin.
So, do all of those have deeded easements?
Some of them do, some of them don't.
But even if they have deeded easements and the land reverted back to the owner, they've got, they've got, you know, what, and it reverted fee back to, to Mr., Mr. Shumlin, then the people on the other side of the road only owned to the center line. That's, that's a ten-foot road. I don't think that me, and you're right, that's not, that's not, that's not an issue. It's not technically an issue tonight, but I'm just saying.
No, it's not an issue even in the law. This was subsequent to the reversion that took place when Old Cottin Road was thrown up in 1893. Mr. Shumlin's predecessor in title granted that easement, and he did not retain it to himself. They did not retain the easement to themselves because they didn't think of it as a road they needed to use. But they did grant the easement, and they granted it down the length of the road. There is a legal easement over that road. It just doesn't belong to Mr. Shumlin.
And it doesn't belong to everyone that's got a house on it?
It belongs to some and not to others.
I, I have a right to that in 1980, which makes me one of the older people in this room, probably referring to the... First of all, I like, I'm Peter Consol. I live at 204, which is... In 1980 puts me at one of the beginning people on that road. So, I guess I, I walked down that road many times. And my only comment, first and foremost, first of all, I'd like to congratulate you in your presentation. It probably was very thorough. However, I did find that, I thought it lacked one specific thing as a builder. When you're making a presentation regarding a piece of property or something, I think you should have maps or think, or some kind of a layout that the audience can see. I don't know how many people in the room didn't quite get the part about how the road took the turn down there. If you did, I mean, I'm one of them, because it's changed over time, but I think...
I actually, I might not define glass, so I can see the...
Yes, sir. I've been there for forty years, and you seem like you just kind of write. What I think we should do is get nice, clear drawings of that as over in the helicopter, and that would, I think that would make it clearer when you refer to it. That's just that one point. That's good, all right. I think that would just help so that everyone can understand when you say the dog leg or the bridge. That we understand what that is. I can't, I couldn't tell when you...
I mean, I'd be happy to do a quick whiteboard. Joe would probably better at it, but I could do it. I mean, I've got it in my mind, but...
But while I'm, while I have the...
It's like Luntcher already has it.
That's Beer's Atlas from 1869.
Yeah, there's lots of maps.
Which is right in the middle of when Cottin Road was illegal.
Right, right.
And the highlighting...
This is what would help.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't make...
No, no, it's, it's...
I made copies for the members of the, of the board, but I didn't, I didn't make a...
That's all I thought would help for us.
That, I drew that map to follow the language of the layout. That's it. It makes a dog leg right there. And that's a map that was in the, in fact, when Cottin Road was created.
You know, I will point out with that, and I think it's a good point to have a map, because some people are visual, but if you look at the language of the discontinuance itself, it says, uh, it says, "The highway leading from the residence of Otis Buxton to east, uh, to east Putney, thence easterly to Cottin Bridge, to the east Putney Road," um, I'm sorry, hold on. Oh, I'm sorry. The road, it says, "requires the highway leading from the residence of Otis Buxton to, uh, east to Putney." It says to Putney. That's what the discontinuance says. So, I mean, I think, I think certainly a map, there are lots of different maps, but certainly one to show it is a good point. But the discontinuance itself says the road goes to Putney.
No, it doesn't. It says east to Putney Line. There's no denying it gets darn close to the line, four hundred feet.
No, but so the Putney Line is not close. It's the whole thing.
East to Putney Line, thence easterly across Cottin Bridge. Cottin Bridge was in Westminster.
May I ask? Everybody's looked at the history of this road. How about East Putney Brook Road? East Putney Brook Road is named the same all the way through. Why is Old Town Farm Road and East Town Farm Road, Old Cottin Road, why are they different names?
Who knows? Who knows? I mean, the thing is, it goes to the Putney Town Line, so, you know, I think, they easily, they could have...
To the town line. It doesn't cross it. It stops.
So what, it just stops right there, but the road keeps going?
And Old Town Farm Road continues.
It may or may not. I actually think they didn't know where the town line was. And I think they thought either it doglegs like Fletcher is saying, or it goes straight. Right, it's my opinion, because all the documents say different things.
So, basically, you failed to prove either way, whether it's a town road or not. Alls you have is your theories, and my theory is that they are named differently for a reason. East Putney Brook Road is one name, the entire length, through the section of Westminster and Putney. Why would it be any different on this particular road if, in fact, they are one in the same road? When they were laid out, you would think they would have mentioned that, wouldn't you? Oh, it's going to connect to this road, or... It says they were laid out differently because they were differently named. They never connected.
Possibly. You might be right. I mean, you know, we're, we're not, we weren't alive back then, you know? And at the end of the day, they've revised the statute so that that's what we're dealing with.
And does...
To take, to take care of all of this, all of these are legitimate concerns. I'm not saying they're not. This is a whole, this has been a kind of a disaster. I mean, this has been a very difficult issue legally, across the state.
Does Ann 178 guarantee access to property? Or does it guarantee access to houses? Because from one of these letters that I had here, it talks about houses. As far as I can see, it guarantees access to your property. Being a portion of your property is good enough. It doesn't guarantee you access to your entire piece of property. That's in a sense in saying that the state guarantees that your entire piece of property is usable. They can't do that. You want to talk about building a, a road up a steep bank? The state doesn't guarantee that you may be able to use all your property under that act. It just guarantees that you can get to it.
I'm not sure that the Rainey Farm actually even borders that road on the backside. Does it?
Yeah, yeah, it's laying on the other side of it.
There's a point on the map.
On the map, it does.
There's a split there. There's a, there's another property line, but there's a portion of it that it does.
Okay, okay.
On the, on the east side of the, of the river, or the east side, not the river, but the stream.
I want to go back to something Fletcher said, because I wanted to just clarify for myself. It seems like what you're saying, Fletcher, is that Mr. Shumlin owns the Rainey Farm in Coto right now, and that actually he has access to all of his property by a Westminster West Road, and that it's only by doing this major subdivision that he landlocks those parcels. Am I right?
Correct.
And then, having been allowed to landlock the parcel, he can then claim to have a right-of-way because he can't reach a landlocked parcel that he just made. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. I just needed to be clear.
So, I'm going to ask Attorney Proctor another question, because I know that we have done this in the past. If Peter Shumlin gives himself on the Westminster West Road enough road frontage, and then he gives himself a fifty-foot right-of-way right down along the side of Old Cottin Road to his other lots, would he not be perfectly, would, would that not suit the law as far as giving him a law? Because we, we have done this in many little farm pieces where there's a piece out back, and along this, along the edge of a farm field on the border, we give them a fifty-foot right-of-way so that they can access their land. And we were always under the impression that that was because of the new laws, that they do not want to landlock land in the state of Vermont.
I think, I think Ms. Pike has a good point, that you're creating a landlock. But if you presume that Mr. Shumlin does what you suggest, what he's doing is tearing up a strip of about thirty or forty feet through an ag overlay parcel, some of the prime agricultural land in, in the town of Westminster. For the purpose of development, he's going to run a bulldozer through there and turn that up. And not to mention, when it gets down into that dip, the wetland, that...
Is that where Philip Stravla goes through?
No.
I'm pretty sure the ag overlay.
Doesn't Philip Stravla go right?
The ag overlay is off, as Mr. Angel pointed out. There's beautiful fields behind that farmhouse. That road runs right along the side of them.
What about legally?
You want to expand it? Well, legally, it's got to come back to you guys, and you guys have to justify it, because the DRB has to sign off on doing that to ag overlay land.
Well, I don't know if the ag overlay...
The ag overlay goes right up to Cottin Road.
End of the tree line. End of the tree line. Ag overlay ends at the tree line.
That's right. How do you get to the tree line? If you're going to do what Chris Potter just suggested, we're carving that road right through the ag overlay land.
Now, he's saying to do it along those two... So, he'd do that as a matter of convenience, a matter of more, more... It's more feasible because it costs less money?
Uh, no, it wouldn't cost less money. It's the only way you can do it. If, if he's not allowed to go down Old Cottin Road, this is just...
The lawyer said that, that, that it'd be crazy to think that he'd upgrade a Class IV public access road on the other side of a brook and build a bridge to get to them properties. So, you're saying that he can, he could do that? The only reason he'd do that is because it's more cost-effective. So, why should cost-effectiveness come into play at all?
So, this is what I've been trying to, this is what I've been trying to say all night here, is that we, as a board, have a set of rules that we have to go by. You guys all have the right, I know some people are angry in this room. We have the right, or, no, you have the right to take this to environmental court if you feel that we have made a mistake. We're just trying to do the best we can, so there's no need to waste your time and money in environmental court. Because, I'm going to just say this, I know this is not going to go over big, but there are already twenty-two different subdivisions on this road.
Then why? Why though?
There's twenty-two subdivisions on this road.
Why aren't these building permits required to have a legal documented right-of-way like I had to have signed to me when my house was built? No one else did.
That's a very important question. That's probably the biggest...
And that should be for the board. It should be decided, okay, you don't have a... And that should be for the board. It should be decided, okay, you don't have a legal deeded right-of-way?
Yes.
Is that an aggregate?
You're actually, you're-
Has he shown it?
You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right.
But I haven't.
You're absolutely right, and that is the most important thing that's been said here so far.
Can I ask a question?
Let me just quick, I'll get right to you. The most important part of that whole thing is none of these other pieces, your piece of property, I don't know how many people on this road have a deeded right-of-way.
There are some others.
There's, there's some others. Yeah, okay, so, so, good for you guys. But none of these other parcels, in my opinion, and it's just my opinion, should exist without a deeded right-of-way.
Exactly.
And Mr. Shumlin, I believe, could take from the center line and go over 50 feet and make himself a deeded right-of-way to that property. This is not, because I, I just told you, I, I, if, you know what, I wish you were milking cows on that property right now.
Yeah, we all do.
Right. And, and it, and that's just my personal, and I don't even know if I'm supposed to say what my personal opinion is.
My parents not selling the farm with deer, what we really all wish to have.
That was the biggest mistake.
But what, but what's, but what's happening here tonight is that, I, I just keep saying it, you know? There's a lot of evidence that we're gathering, um, you know, when I talk about a 50-foot right-of-way down a field, and we start talking about fields and ag overlays, that's just like smokescreen, as I think somebody else said, you know? Is this what can happen? I believe it is what can happen. I, I would have to invest it, investigate it a lot more. But I believe that's what could happen if, you know, if, if we determined that this road wasn't gonna work, could he do that?
Wouldn't that technically be widening the road since it's not separate? And therefore, basically, you know, not feasible, I mean?
Well, it's his property, I mean, he can, it's, it's his property.
I don't think, that's not what we want. Do we really want, like, I mean, I don't know if he would be that or not, but is that what we want? Like, another road right next to the road? That's crazy.
Well, that's not speculating, that is-
Let me just let Phil, go ahead, Phil. Go ahead, Phil.
Speaking of Peter and all of his family, hundreds of acres of this man owns. He decides he's gonna do his subdivision out here where everyone here says it's murky. Everyone here says it's a big, you know, question of this and that. Out of all the land he owns, he's gonna do a subdivision here, not on some of his other parcels. For instance, next to his house on Hickory Ridge. Maybe he's got a right-of-way over there. I mean, he's got his own driveway. Why doesn't he subdivide and build there?
Well, and I, I don't know, I, I understand, like, the emotion of this whole thing. Honest to God, I do. But I think Fletcher even said it. I mean, we're, we can't get emotional over our decision. I can't say because of Peter Shumlin and the way you guys feel about him, that I can just, that we can just say as a group, you know, no, you're not doing it. I mean, we have to follow these rules, and-
I understand that.
Hasn't been proven yet, so we're not just-
We're not, no, we're not, we're not even close to there. I'm just trying to gather information and at the same time, trying to just let everybody know. I know I'm making everybody in here mad, but, uh-
Well, how much community public input, what's that word for the DRB hearing? I mean, we turned out over and over again in large numbers against it. So, I would hope to think regardless of the rules and regulations, that would mount for something here at these hearings.
Right. Well, the other thing that, that comes into play-
But I also have word before we keep doing this whole piece right here, but I don't think any of us are focused on the person. It is that in Vermont right now, the more agricultural land we can protect, the better. And in this particular property, in order for him to subdivide, he has to do a lot of other changes. He, he will probably have to put a road down the middle. He has not agreed not to try and develop the rest of it. As far as the actual parcels and the divisions, I don't think that tells you that there'll be that many houses back there. We have 14 houses. 14 houses that are separated on a lot of those, are concerned about conservation, you know, Marion and the women, they have their land in conservation. All of us are concerned about maintaining the beauty of Vermont and the fields and the farms.
I under-
The board, I think in Westminster, the board, that you're also concerned about how to protect our agricultural land. When it goes, it will not come back. Developments need to be where young people who do not have much money can gain public transportation and access. It's that is the center of our community, not out on the rural areas, and the farmlands really need to be protected.
Can I, I just- Just really quickly, just so-
I don't need any more pieces. I just would like to let a simple piece of that be-
Okay, so, so just so everybody knows, these two parcels are not on the farmland.
Now, I want to say though, they are connected, and you're talking-
They're in the woods.
Mr. Angel.
I'm sorry, but that's still part of the farm. Farm and forest.
They are connected, and they're trying to get a known right-of-way here. And there's no doubt that he's out trying to divide the rest of the land.
I just, I just have one quick, and I wanna thank Fletcher Proctor here for telling us all to go back, go back to when Old Cotting Road was built, and people passed down Old Cotting Road. So if I was standing on Old Cotting Road back in 1845, and I looked and I saw that the Ranys owned both sides of that road, and the inside portion of that road was beautiful farm fields, and there was cows in it, and there was tree lines in between, and there was this and that. And I would say to myself, I never wanna see this farmland taken up. Now, if I were able to live until today, and I walked down that road with my experience from 1845, and I would look around and I would go, there are 22 separate parcels on the land I owned as one piece. So I understand what you're saying about saving farmland, but where in life can we tell somebody they can't live in the woods because we need to save farmland? And I know you're telling me that I'm trying to promote this for Peter Shumlin. And in all honesty, I'm not. I'm just trying to point out some basic, simple facts that lawyers call setting precedent. Unfortunately, your road has set precedent. Go ahead, Fletcher.
In 1845, what was the zoning regulation?
We probably didn't have any.
Well, that's exactly the point. You see, it had, the rules have changed over time.
Right.
And some of those parcels, I'll betcha-
But the emotion hasn't changed, as you can see.
Some of those parcels, I'll betcha, were created before Westminster even had zoning. Well, when zoning comes in, you change the rules. You live by the rules that we've got now. So, I mean, I think-
Act 178 further changed it.
Mr. Shumlin's obligation is to come forward with a proposal that meets the rules now, not a reminisce about 1845. And I don't even know, the Ranys as a family owned all of that farmland in there, but I'm, I'm not sure that everything, that one farm was on both sides of Cotting Road.
I don't know if it's, it's just the, according to the map, I saw the name right.
I think Courtney Mary's farmhouse, that the, the land on the south side of Cotting Road, I think, was owned by a different Raney, but it was all Ranys.
Completely possible, yeah.
But the point is that, yeah, it's, and this, you know, red herring of discrimination, and why doesn't Mr. Shumlin get to do what everybody else did? Boo-hoo, Peter, the rules changed. I mean, yeah, you're right. You don't necessarily get to do what somebody 100 years ago did. You don't even necessarily get to do what somebody 50 years ago did. You gotta live by the rules as they exist now. Westminster adopted zoning. I appreciate the fact that you're saying you're gonna focus on the bylaws. The bylaws say he either has to have frontage on a town road or a deeded right-of-way. I'm arguing he has submitted neither to you. He hasn't met the requirements yet. I don't think he's, maybe he comes back with a proposal that says he's gonna plow a 50-foot wide road down the side of Old Cotting Road and tear up that farmland. You know, maybe that's the proposal. That's not the proposal you have in front of you.
That's true.
He also has a road on the backside between High Meadows and, and his farm. There's a road in there that he had just upgraded with grant money before he bought the farm conveniently. So why can't he use that road? That's on his property.
Okay. Well, again-
Probably.
Again, I, I feel like I've probably agitated the majority of the people here. So, what I'd like to do is, this is an informational meeting. We've gathered a lot of information. Uh, if anybody here thinks they have one or two little things that are 100% pertinent to exactly what we talked about tonight or this application, I'd like to give folks one last, and then after the general public has their opportunity, then maybe we can give Fletcher Proctor and Mr. Angel a few minutes? So go ahead, okay, would you go ahead if you'd like?
I think I just made my summation.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, Fletcher just said that we don't have information that says that, that he can show you that right-of-way. Is that true from your opinion?
What's that?
That he, that Mr. Shumlin does, has not submitted documentation that he has a right-of-way. Is that true? Because I haven't seen the application.
As, as far, I believe we're, we're still dealing with Old Cotting Road. It, we don't have anything suggesting what I said about the, the second right-of-way. That's just something that is-
So to add, add to that, we all have unwritten or written because we've used the road right-of-way. The purchase date to the property then becomes pertinent because he didn't use the road when Ranys owned it. It wasn't his property. Now he buys it and wants to do what he feels like and take his right-of-way, which he does not have. And he's buying that with the property, shouldn't he have researched that before he bought the property, so he knew what he was getting into?
Well, what I, what I'm definitely gonna do, I didn't have time to, because we just got some of this information, is I'm going to have the town council, our town, I hope Russ will be okay with this, and, and he is going to look at VS, 19 VSA 717C and give us his determination on how he feels about this. And then, you know, how he feels this coincides with the zoning ordinance. Uh, as Fletcher has said a few times, we're gonna follow this zoning ordinance.
My point being is he can't just buy the land and, and take a bulldozer down through it and upset all the rest of the landowners just because he now owns the land in front of them anyhow to do that.
And he can't move civil war-era rock walls to make the road 50 feet to his advantage.
Which was writ in law, which was a common rule.
That was just, that was just an example that I used of other, other farms that we gave, that they deeded 50-foot right-of-ways. I, I don't, this is nothing that he said, so I, I don't want to, uh, you know, make the mistake that this is something that he said. This is just an example I used on other land that was subdivided. Yes, go ahead, sir.
And, and I'd like to remind you that if you're gonna follow Act 178 on this, that you wouldn't be allowed to widen the road as you're suggesting by 50 feet.
He's not, what I said as an example would have nothing to do with Cotting Road. This is a totally separate roadway that he would put down.
If you, if he, if he wants to use half of Old Cotting Road and add on the Old Cotting Road, essentially that would be upgrading the surface of the road, and you're only allowed maintenance and not upgrading under Act 178.
Can, um, can I ask you, we're gonna have another meeting, can you bring in all this 178 documentation? Because I looked up 178 and, uh, I guess I was confused completely by 178.
Does Larry Sliison have access to that information?
Uh, I don't, I don't know.
I would think your, your attorney probably be, he'll do better than I would.
Yeah, but I mean, I just, I just wanna make sure I'm clarifying everything, you know, as to your-
I even provided, uh, that attorney right there, Sam, a copy of one's, the, the, the status of Old Cotting Road at one time, and how my son had gotten a ticket using part of that. I'm sure that Sam probably still has it. And he told me at that time that he thought that anybody would say that they don't, it doesn't provide him access on East Putney Brook Road too, so.
Can I, I want to do that again? I, I feel like Marilyn didn't get to answer her question.
No comment?
Has Mr. Shumlin provided a deeded right-of-way? And if he hasn't, how long does he have in order to produce it before this war?
Uh, he, he per, he can present whatever he wants at any point. He can say, I'm not gonna do this now, and he can wait six years and come back with that proposal to us. I mean, this doesn't, if, if he doesn't provide us with enough information, then we deny the application, and if he wants to go to environmental court, he goes to environmental court. It's, it's, uh, uh, there's no timeline as far as, yeah.
But, but I guess if he doesn't provide it to you, that becomes grounds that you could make, this board could make a decision.
We can make a decision on Old Cotting Road, yes. Yeah. And did you, did we not get a good answer to?
Guess his application will include evidence that he has a right-of-way to those properties.
That's what we're working on right now. The, this, this, so, and unfortunately, I think this, we were all trying to figure out this road. I remember you came to the second meeting, maybe it was, and, you know, you were saying about trying to come up with a, a, the, the agreement and everything. So you guys were all trying to figure out the road. Well, that got us going, you know, jeez, is this road really a big issue, kinda thing, you know? And then I think we turned it into more of an issue than it needed to be. Um, so now, we're going to have our town council give us a ruling on what he thinks regarding this new law right here that we've been given tonight. Yep, okay. Would you, either Fletcher or Sam?
I don't know, Joe, do you wanna say anything?
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean-
Other than the layout for Old Cotting Road is, is one of their question marks, uh, we're thinking it was a county road and the layout is at the county court. This layout did, Fletcher produced, is only a 400-foot section of, uh, Old Cotting Road, which I think was a section that was patched in later on to get it to Putney. But it's not, it's not overly clear, uh, you know, reading that layout exactly what the purpose was.
Yeah, it, it's confusing, I mean-
Somebody thought 400 feet long, and that's, that's all that lays out.
Yeah, that, I mean-
The discontinuance says more about Old Cotting Road, but again, we're, you know, requiring that the court find out if they have a layout.
Yeah, so there might be more information coming. I mean, if they find a layout, then that's obviously gonna be information. I mean, you know, at the end of the day, I think it comes, you've got it in front of you, Chris, it's 717C. I mean, regardless of what the thing was, I mean, if it was, if it was legally di, I mean, there's so many ways you could look at this. If it was legally discontinued and the Ranys owned both sides of that road at one point, it's possible that Mr. Shumlin owns the entire road now. I mean, that's even a possibility. So that would mean having to go back and look at the land records and see exactly where those lines are, and maybe Joe and I gotta do that, you know? But I mean, at the end of the day, I'm not sure it really matters.
Well, I think it does, because he's still, whether he, and he doesn't have a deeded right-of-way from all the abutting landowners. He may have the beginning of the road, if in fact what you're saying is true about it being Raney-owned, but I have a deeded right-of-way from every abutting landowner, right from McKinnon Road to my property. Mr. Shumlin's application should include the same. It would be no different. He's asking for the same consideration as everybody else. He should ask for the same consideration from all the abutting landowners right up to that parcel.
And, and, and so just really quickly, what I'm saying is if he actually owns the road itself, like the land, he doesn't have, I mean, he, he implicit with the ownership is a right-of-way. That's part of the ownership interest.
Did you hear him say that? It was two different Ranys that own two different-
No, I'm saying, I'm just saying hypothetically. I don't know. I'm just saying that there's gonna have to be, I mean, once you go down this road of Old Cotting Road, it's-
Because when you drag that in, it sounds like a threat to me.
No, 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 no. I'm not, I'm not threatening anything.
So you're, you're, this is just my opinion. Your lawyer may have put that in just to protect you for the access on that road. Not, not to, never say, take the deeded in, but they've done it just as a disclaimer. I, I understand, but typically, like, like Sam has said, when a road's discontinued, the rights revert to the center line.
Correct, that's what I've been told. I was told that by Bill O'Connor. I was told that by, uh, Bill Noyes. Have you ever researched the survey marker out in that field? Perhaps you oughta look into that.
Which field are we talking about?
In the Ranys' field, in the ledges up there.
Well, that's a, that's an elevation. That's a benchmark.
Well, funny thing is, Bill Noyes told me years ago, when I had an issue with this road, to research that marker and it- to research that marker, and it will tell you anything and everything you want to know about the road. Because I was having right of way issues.
All of that is just relative.
Okay.
Yeah, we found that, it's in the ledge out there.
Yeah, there's two of them.
I think going back to wanting to make sure that the board answers the question, why is it that Mr. Shumlin was, why are we even considering allowing Mr. Shumlin to landblock parcels so that he then can argue that he needs a right of way when he has full access on Westminster West Road to those parcels? I mean, it just, it's, it's like, it feels like I'm creating a problem that I then have to argue about and, 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 and solve. So I, I mean, I guess I really want the board to consider, when you think about this, that what you're being asked to do is landblock a couple of parcels, and then decide whether or not to grant a right of way that he doesn't have a deeded right of way to. And if you're comfortable doing that, that's okay, but I really want you to think about it, because it's, it's just as nuts.
The, the other thing that I, I'm just, and, uh, obviously, I, I know your opinion, but the rest of the people that live on that road, if this goes the way that we're all talking, you know, we're making a big mess out of Old Cottin Road here, and as soon as you say to yourself, you know what, my grandson wants to move up here from New York City, and I'm gonna divide off ten acres of my twenty acres and give it to him, I, I wouldn't want to be living on that road, and this is just, this is just a-
And you have to come to the board and ask for a permit.
Right.
That's right.
Right.
Right away.
But, but what happens is, what happens is-
Or maybe they talk to the landowners and get it deeded right of way, you know?
Right. Sure, no, I mean, you got perfect, yeah, that's perfect. There's, there's so many things about this that's, uh, confusing and, uh-
But remember, though, they can't deed a right of way over the right of way. You don't have that power to deed somebody else a right of way over a right of way that you have, but that's all you have.
That was a discontinued road.
So it's, it's a tricky-
I was told by the county office that it reverted back to the landowners.
Right.
Back in nineteen eighty-five, when I had issues.
Yep.
Eighty-five, eighty-eight is when my deed is deeded to me by every abutting landowner.
So you're saying that-
So that was smart.
That, that one seventy-eight-
I've required it.
Yeah, okay.
I was gonna say, yeah.
And so should all the others.
Deed is a sign of-
Yeah, we didn't have cash to buy.
The, the easement that you may claim that he has on that road would have to be for agricultural uses, not for residential.
I think, uh-
I don't, I don't envy you guys.
No, we seem, we seem to be slowing down here with the information. So, definitely, we all have homework to do. I'll tell everybody here, the first thing that I'm gonna do is have Russ check with our legal counsel to find out how he feels about the Vermont statute.
Is the town sure they don't want to buy the, the road back, I mean?
It says very def-
I mentioned that one time.
It says very definitively in the ordinance in two or three places that anything that happens regarding this does not make the town liable to take that road back. There's two spots that read that very clearly, because they don't watch a road. Yep.
Has the town considered approaching, or maybe they already have, Peter Shumlin about getting this farm in conservation, when the Westminster Town Forest is right there on the other side of the land that he wants to subdivide? Does the town of Westminster want that? Because I know that that's connected to the Westminster Town Forest, but East Putney Brook is in the middle there, but that's also a way that this land can be protected. Wouldn't have to do with Old Cottin Road, or the old tunnel Cottin Road. And I know that it just got a lot of harvest, but so did the Westminster Town Forest, and they're gonna regrow at the same time. I know that there'll be issues when the town of Westminster wants to harvest on Old Cottin Road, but I'm just wondering, because of the deer yards and conservation and the World Conference of Glassed Tree, which is very important, the major stream that feeds into the Connecticut River, from the whole town of Westminster West, from the Pinnacle Bridge line all the way down. That's a main waterway.
And there are bridges over that, aren't there?
So I just wanted to point that out, that this land should be conserved, and instead of putting building lots on it, and like you said, if someone wants to move up from New York City, well, maybe they can find a place closer to town.
He's got plenty of other things. I'm wondering too, I want another one up there.
I mean, I can, I can say to, um, to Fletcher, anybody else, I mean, if, if there's some offer that's made around this or something, I mean, I'm duty-bound to pass it on. You know, it's not gonna die at my desk, that's for sure. I mean, I've never talked to the guy about it, I don't know, but, I mean, that could be another way around about, you know, trying to focus our energy more on maintaining that road and creating a good situation. Everybody wants to see an outcome.
So is this about a money offer, or is it about him wanting to building lots? And so if he conserves the Ranny farm, you get a lot of money when you conserve a farm. I grew up on an eight-generation dairy farm, five miles from where I live, on East Putney Brook, suffering in New Hampshire, and you get a lot of money when you conserve land. And so if he conserves the whole farm, you could raise pigs in the woods. And pigs grow better in the woods. And I know that multiple people have approached him to rent the Ranny farm, and it's great there. The majors use it for sheep, and basins mow the fields for their cows. Uh, but he could rent that fourteen and eight acres to someone who wanted to raise hogs. And they could raise hogs there, and that would still be land that's in agricultural use, whether it's a pasture or a forest. And I just think that those things kind of need to be brought up. Um, because I've been around animals my entire life, and I'm not very old, but I can raise this animal just without anything. But when they're in their own natural environment, they grow so much better.
Uh, thank you, this, um,
Could I make a suggestion? I mean, you, you, you touched on the possibility of this going to Environmental Court, that people are dissatisfied with the result.
Right.
And I want to tell you, having done that with your town council last year in a case out of Putney, I can tell you, it's a lousy solution. It's, it's very expensive and very time-consuming, and Mr. Slayson was simply acting as town council, but he was a full participant in the hearing. I'm sure he ran up a good bill for Putney on that. So I think all of us have an interest in trying to find a solution that is, that doesn't involve that rather blunt instrument.
I was just making sure everybody knew that they have options beyond us.
Everybody can always appeal, but I appreciate your desire to come up with a decision that, that's in keeping with the bylaws and therefore defensible. But perhaps we can also, as a community, come up with a decision that actually benefits the farm and, you know, maybe avoids the development, but turns it into something more than it is right now. Because it's sort of dormant as a farm right now, it's getting used around the edges. I mean, I, I've talked to Peter Dixon about running cows on that farm again. He really needs a supply, a reliable supply of high-quality milk. I mean, I used, I, I used to think that Harold was nuts because he was running jerseys on that farm. And who milks jerseys these days? Well, part of the problem is they got too much butter fat in the milk. Well, I don't think Peter would be upset by that. And heck, you know, somebody wanted to take over a project like that, they got a farmer living next door.
Yeah, and I, I just, I'm, I'm trying to make, uh, make everybody understand that we are focused, the four of us here, on the zoning bylaws and trying to work with that. You know, I, I don't get too worried about it when people get fired up, you know what I mean? Because I'm, I'm, I'm gonna do the best I can, and that's all I can do. That's all we can do as a group. So I understand the emotion, you know, because if this was my land and somebody was trying to tell me something, I would be fired up myself. I'm just thinking back that every three years, when they asked me to re-up onto this board, that maybe like ten years ago, I should have said, forget it, I don't want to do it anymore, but, you know. I just, I'm just trying to make sure you guys understand that we're not here trying to sell Mr. Shumlin, you know, trying to, trying to divide Mr. Shumlin's property. We're just trying to give him the best, you know what I mean, the best we can out of the, out of the ordinance, so.
Well, that's why you get paid a buck.
And I appreciate the, I do appreciate, you know, everybody's comments and the information that we're gathering. I think everybody else does, and, and, um, I hope we give you a, like, a chance to speak your mind and, and, um, you know, kind of go towards, go towards, I don't know what kind of solution it's gonna, it's gonna be. We're gonna take all this information, we have to, you know, we have to work on all this information now, see where it goes from there. But I think if you guys are all set, maybe we can just call it a night.
Um, just one question, if the board does want to entertain additional information, if there is additional information for any of the interested parties to submit, how long would that be, like thirty days or something?
I would think, what's, what, uh, what's our next meeting?
Next, next meeting is November first.
Yeah, it's basically thirty days, so, um, maybe-
It would have to be ASAP, so that we can publicize the, the hearing again for information. So it would have to be right away.
So every time you guys get information, you have to call another game?
That's correct.
Is that what it is? And so when would be, if you need it, if you wanted, if somebody wanted to submit information, when would that be needed by?
Typically, we'd say the first Friday gives us enough time to post the twenty-plus days in the newspaper. So the first Friday would be the fifth of, um, October.
And then if we, if that wasn't possible, you just have to run it another day.
Tomorrow, that's tomorrow.
I know that, I'm, I'm just, um, trying to keep my, my frame of mind, because it's critical that we, that we get this out.
And then if, if, if that isn't, then it would get pushed over to the next meeting or whatever.
That's correct.
Okay. Yep.
Okay. Is that it? Everybody happy, Phil?
You know, I guess I would like to say that going to the bylaws, you know, the Old Cottin Road is not Peter's sole access to his land. So going back to what you, you know, the hypothetical, that he could build his own access in there, I think that weighs pretty heavily on, I would think it weighs heavily on your, you know, decision-making.
Yeah.
Given that he can get into those properties from his own land and Westminster West Road, or any of his other ones. And why he's trying to get in on Old Cottin Road causes a big, you know, fuss. He's got a lot of land he could develop, he's picking these ones.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, why did he put the buses out there in the field too, right before the subdivision?
Yeah.
Not being neighborly, that's for sure.
Not his sole access, therefore unnecessary.
Right.
Okay, very good, will everybody please be calm?